The proposed standards is a product of a very collaborative process between the town, BKF engineers, and our development stakeholders. The study process included two opportunities for the stakeholder group to review and comment on the proposed standards. Each review resulted in several hours of detailed discussions which resulted in many changes and improvements. A public workshop was also held to present information and obtain feedback from Atherton residents. Ed Viscotti from BKF engineers is here this evening to provide a brief overview of the study and answer any questions that the council may have. And I also wanted to acknowledge the work of David Nguyen, the town's project manager, who worked very closely and effectively with BKF and our stakeholders to get us to this point. This item is for information and comment. Staff plans on bringing the proposed standards back to the city council after January meeting for adoption.
Thank you very much.
My name's Ed Viscotti. My name's Ed Viscotti with BKF engineers. Been practicing civil engineering for over thirty years now specializing in anything that flows: water, sewer, storm. Going to start with, I guess the computer booting up, we'll see how that does, but I think I have my slides memorized, we'll just keep going. General purpose of the update was to reflect changes in the law. And so 2007, we had a standard, now we have to move on. So among the directions, just to lay a framework for where we came from, drainage law in California is very simple: you have to act reasonably. And reasonable is defined as what twelve reasonable jurors think is reasonable. That's about it. We're dealing with a lot of unknowns. But we're trying to help the city out and define what is reasonable so that you don't hurt somebody else by your actions as a developer. And there are very many ways that that could happen. And a lot of times, we're just trying to protect the town so that when the town gives an approval, it's rationally based, it's not going to lead to flooding. So that's step one. Step two is there have been substantial changes in the way stormwater must be treated coming off urban runoffs. Originally, nineteen sixty's a big effort was, "The industries are polluting us." Then it was wastewater treatment plants. Well, those have been corrected. Now it's what are the non-point sources? And construction sites were identified as one of the keys. So the first step in going through that was, let's get all the sites that are greater than one acre. They are now forced to register on a database that's on the state that's accessible for everybody. The next phase of that is every site under one acre has to be registered through the town, and the town has to have an ordinance that covers that. So these are the things we're going to be talking about: the ordinance, the tools, and the justification. And just the overview of, what did we find out? Well, in order to set these standards, we wanted to look at what the Atherton channel is doing, how good a shape it's in. And it is still a problem. We've been detaining water, it's not been a substantial help, but we certainly haven't made things worse without a development. The over detention, though, not a huge benefit overall. Again, every little bit helps. So it's a frequency thing during a given storm, you get a little bit less per every detention basin in there. So we do agree that stormwater detention should be continued. And town-wide, it's critical that this happens. One of the worst locations for flooding in this area is the Bayfront Canal. There are trailer parks down there that flood even during minor storm events. It's interesting, this recent weather had flooding here. I didn't hear of any flooding down there. But there have been other events where just about every other year, I get reports of flooding in the Bayfront Canal area. As such, Redwood City is looking for your financial support, and town has said, "No thank you, we're detaining our stormwater, so we haven't made anything worse." So hence, that stormwater detention is a critical, big-picture item. Redwood City is looking to fix it, though. And they have plans of working with the Don Edwards Wildlife Refuge, using some stormwater help, supplement ponds down there, make freshwater ponds to supplement the saltwater pond, brackish water pond. So there is some action going on. So regulations, we talked, you have to act reasonably. There is a new regulation that just took effect that says, "Single-family residents with more than twenty-five-hundred square feet of new impervious area have to do some form of treatment." And the standards are not as clear as one would like, and we've put the burden on David here, that measures have to be reasonable and appropriate to the job being proposed. It's not a hundred percent of the site has to treat. If you're familiar with these five sites that Michael talked about, they have to treat a hundred percent of their sites if they do improvements. Here, we're just looking at implementing one of these. Several uses, could be a cistern, could be a roof. As a member of the San Mateo County Stormwater Pollution Group, they've put out some flyers on how to implement each one of these, so it's a very specific set of rules. Construction I talked about, greater-than-one-acres standards, state mandated. One of the issues, though, is that even though it's state mandated, it is enforced at the local level. And as we got into these standards, putting them together, one thing triggers another. They mandate that there be an enforcement response plan that the town adopts. So we put one together, and that is now the plan, so if there's a violation, there's a strict level of enforcement. This is new to a lot of contractors. I did give one seminar for contractors on what's the expectation? If you start seeing brown water that doesn't belong there, that has to be reported through David. He'll go to the contractor. We have inspectors going out to the site. Your building inspectors have been trained to look for any form of pollution leaving site. It could be trash, it could be dirt, it could be paint. Only rain in the storm drain is the key word. And, okay, next one? So even less than one acre, everybody has to do it now. So we changed the standards, I think it's in your packet. Section B-1B7 talks about the storm detention. Previously, everybody who did anything that triggered the drainage checklist, greater-than-five-thousand square feet, had to detain for their entire site. The feeling was that there were things like driveway repairs that might trigger more than five thousand square feet. The people said, "Well, I'm not going to repair my driveway because I'd have to put in this huge detention basin." And it discouraged common maintenance, which in the bigger picture, did not seem like a good idea. So we've changed it to between five thousand and twenty-five thousand, you have to detain for any new impervious area. And in a checklist for permit purposes, we've defined what impervious area is. Changing your roof, although that's impervious area, does not trigger this, it has to be at-grade. If the grade changes are less than four inches, it doesn't trigger it. So there's a very well-defined grading and drainage checklist defining what triggers these various items. But if you're greater than twenty-five-hundred square feet, you do have to detain, so we've talked about that. And it's an education effort, so it's less than a hundred percent. Let's get to the next slide. B-1C5, the single-family is excluded here. So we're going into the maintenance plan. If you're one of those five sites, you have to have a maintenance plan. That maintenance plan has to be a recorded document, so if the property changes hands, it goes to the new owner. And that's required by the municipal regional permit for stormwater, a state permit. This does not apply to single-family residences, which was the concern back in 2007. Now we talk about flood control. Okay, so less than five thousand, not required. Five thousand to twenty-five thousand, only for new impervious surface. Greater than twenty-five thousand, all new and existing impervious sites. Three ways to do it. The traditional way has been option one, where you just store two inches of rainfall, you're good. No engineering study, no anything. Option two is three inches of rainfall, but you get to deduct for the water that would leave the basin over the course of the storm, as long as you don't make things worse. And we have defined minimum sizes of pumps orifices. Various engineers that have done their reviews say, yes, that would make for smaller basins. So it's an option. And third is, BKF has put together a computer model of the entire Atherton basin, so if you're in the Atherton Channel basin, you could use that model. And if you show that there's no impact based on however you manage your site, then you don't need to do further detention. On that model, not quite ready yet because we had a massive storm here nine days ago, ten days ago. Got some good measurements at Atherton Channel, and I'm going to check the rainfall versus our projected water levels, make sure it's right before I pass it on to the town. Bridges across the town have been a controversial issue of late, and based on discussions with, especially Michael, he says the liability to the town is something the town doesn't want. So we've requiring that anybody that puts a bridge in or repairs a bridge indemnifies the town of any damages associated with maintenance or anything. So if a tree comes down the channel, wipes out a bridge, or plugs up a bridge, the owner of that bridge has to indemnify the town. So it'll discourage anybody from putting a bridge. If they really want to do it, they have to make sure that it's not on yet. Conformance to plans is a new one. A lot of the engineers in the group felt that there isn't a lot of feedback, so that you're not getting what was intended. We've added this section that if you do anything in the town right-of-way, in terms of a gravity system, a sewer or storm, it has to be surveyed so the town knows where it is. There have been problems with the town going in to do work on streets, et cetera, and facilities aren't where people thought they were. So this will help assure that. And also, the engineer has to certify that things were built per the engineer's plan. Basement ordinance, a lot of time we spent on that in 2007, and we have no real changes to it. We have one minor change, and that light wells have become very popular. As we found out how basements evolved back in 2007, before people were building basements, I always thought basements were underground without any lights. Become very popular to put windows that are below ground. Various engineers have all agreed that if a pump goes out, if there's no storage, water goes into the basement, they want some storage down there. Good design practice, so that should save on problems with homeowners. Go ahead. Section E is a brand-new section that talks about the construction site management. This is a mandated requirement of the state municipal permit. You have the ordinance that allows staff to enforce construction site management of And with that, any questions?
Okay, now we have, like, I think city manager?
I was just telling Mike.
I was going to say, well, if you've got a question, we all do. So, thank you very much. That's a lot to digest. I guess I'll bring it to council, I have a question. I'm going to wait until I hear from my colleagues.
I attended the workshop, so I ask my questions there.
Well, good for you, I didn't do that. I just, the input from the residents and the workshops, since I didn't go, I'm sorry. Did you also have our contractor friends there and input from them also?
No, they were actually, you know, the input we got there were through the stakeholder group. And most of that was really from the engineering community that does most of the work there.
Like in anything, it's just like, you know, you kind of move the dial a little one-way, and there may be unintended consequences somewhere else. Obviously, we've got flooding and drainage issues. Yes, sir.
Could I ask one question? Mike? The rail corridor here, is there any obligation on their part to pay attention to these kinds of regulations?
Ed, can I pass that one on to you?
Boy, it's like I could give you five different answers for that. They have a policy where they're supposed to convey the hundred-year storm through any new improvement. Yet, I have seen incremental changes, especially in Redwood City, where we survey it one year, then we come back and it's a little bit higher. It's a very confusing process, this whole being reasonable law.
Do we have any leverage in that area in terms of, none whatsoever?
Actually, the law gets really funny when you deal with railroads. Because railroads came west from the east and they, there was a lot of corruption and weird dealings. In fact, when the rail lines went in, they gave the railroads certain distances from the rail lines. In every town, they gave them a certain amount of land so they could build a station, which later on, they sold for huge profits. So bottom line is, we don't control the railroads. The PUC and other state agencies control the railroads. So we have virtually no authority over the railroads, except what the PUC or the state of California specifically would give us, which is very little.
I see where you're going with that, council.
That was a great idea, Mike.
So open up for the public. Anybody have any questions for our consultants here? Seeing none, we'll just receive your information and look forward to receiving the next version of the resolution. The ordinance. So we're going to move on to item number eighteen, which is another information report regarding the Town Center project report. And this is going to be given to us by city manager George Jodrick.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, actually going to kind of merge eighteen and nineteen together because the recommendations are the same of both. The report's intended to advise the council on the status of both of the issues, the Town Center project and the library project. The Town Center committee was formed to assist the council in developing a vision and goals for the Town Center. Upon approval, the committee could engage residents and outside professional services to aid in the visioning process. And upon approval of the ultimate project, it could assist in obtaining funds for the Town Center improvements, which you heard earlier this evening, the formation of a 501(c)(3) and the, one of the initial contributions toward that project. In an effort to confirm the desires of the electorate with respect to the funding sources for the Town Center project, the town placed that on the ballot as Measure L in November. The measure was successful. However, in the same election, the town had also placed Measure F on the ballot, a measure to decide the location of the proposed library expansion project. The location of Palmer Park was selected as the preferred location for the library, and if it was rejected, the measure would prohibit the library in other locations, but would not prohibit the library in other locations, but would prohibit it in the park. The measure was not successful in passage, so expanding the library within the area of the Town Center remains an alternative location. And that's why these two are kind of linked together. Recognizing that the library expansion project could become a part of the Town Center project, the Town Center committee suggested that the city council step back and evaluate the possibility of reconstituting the Town Center committee into something like a hybrid committee to address the needs of both the library expansion project and the Town Center project. The committee suggested that the council could consider a master plan approach to designing the Town Center inclusive of a library expansion. However, the committee, well, so staff recommends that the council consider the following and provide direction at the January council meeting. Thank the participating committees, the library and the Town Center committees, for their hard work and dedication to span both of them, and consider soliciting volunteers and forming a new committee to serve in an advisory capacity as the town develops a master plan for both the library and the Town Center project and begins the design phase for both projects. It's anticipated that any project moving forward would still continue to have extensive public participation components as part of its design and development. To date, the town has spent thirty-one thousand four hundred forty-two dollars toward the Town Center project, but all of these funds were spent prior to the formation of the actual Town Center committee. And with respect to the library project, the town has spent four hundred and eighty-nine thousand six hundred and nine dollars, and all activity for that project has ceased upon council direction and putting this on the ballot. The library committee also met, and they've essentially recommended the same thing, that they take a step backwards and wait for direction from the town council. That concludes the staff report. And again, it's kind of combined both, but you can take each item individually.
Bring it to council for any comments?
Question of the staff here. So we don't have an action item, it's actually been agendaized here, so what is the, what we can do in terms of providing direction or making comments on this?
Well, I think, if I could just, yeah, I think that the last paragraph of the staff report says that it's recommended that the council consider the above options and provide staff with direction at the January council meeting. So I think we are receiving this information from staff, kind of as a wrap-up, and acknowledging that both the Atherton Library Steering Committee, the ALVSC, and the Town Center Task Force Committee have met, and they have essentially volunteered to take a hiatus, disband themselves in deference to what the council decides to do moving forward come January. I do want to make a, kind of a technical comment in the staff report under 3(c), where it talks about in the Town Center Task Force findings that the committee members would also serve as a fundraising arm for the Town Center portion of the project. That, as we know, is, while it may have been in the original charter of the Town Center Task Force, the, over the course of the last couple of years, it's been established that the council or a committee, council authorized committee would not do any of the fundraiser fundraising, but it would be a resident committee that would do the capital campaign. And as we see tonight, that has already been formed and seeded with some contributions at this point. Yes.
No matter what we do, any new library, for instance, is going to be years in the making. And I would just like to ask, are we going to make any improvements to the present library? Because the present library definitely needs some attention, and I just wonder if we should, one council meeting, look at, put an item on the agenda that would recommend improvements to the present library.
I think that would be something worthwhile discussing. Any other comments?
Yes, sir. Got you.
I'm over. Have to say. I'm obviously in favor of some consolidation. I'd also hope that we could have some more public input in January as well, so that we could hear of, you know, the public, what their concerns would be in consolidation and so on. So I think that that would be a good thing to move forward with the staff recommendation.
Yeah, my thoughts or comments on the staff report are as follows. I certainly favor the idea of a Town Center master facilities plan that would incorporate the lease and administration, the new library, council chambers, and all the Town Center buildings here. I would think that it might behoove us not to include the park buildings initially, but really concentrate on the Town Center area. The park buildings might be something approached in a little different manner. I would also suggest that trying to arrive at the size and functional use of each facility needs to be addressed and decided early on. And I certainly would favor thanking the members of the two committees for their service in formally disbanding them. I'd like to throw out the idea also of be considered as putting off forming any committee or committees at the outset, but wait until there's a well-defined, specific need. Consider instead maybe the approaching it in having, be a series of workshops and selecting some residents to serve on a panel for a particular discussion, and rotate the members that serve on the panels, so we get a broader cross-section of resident engagement. The workshops would allow council members and members of other committees and commissions to hear firsthand and participate in discussion as the planning evolves. So a big change I think would make sense is for staff to take a larger role and be largely responsible for planning the process rather than a resident committee, yet making sure that the process really engages the public in an effective way.
That's good to consider. Any more council comments? I'll open it up for public discussion. Any public comments on these two staff reports, items number eighteen and nineteen? Hearing none, just bring it back, and thank you very much, and we'll discuss this further in our January meeting.
All right, staff will bring back some analysis of improvement. Vice Mayor, I'm going to ask his comments.
Okay, so we're going to look at item number twenty, information report about the proposed improvements to the existing Little League field at Palmer Park. The community services director, Mike Kashiwaki, is going to give the report. Thank you.
Mr. Merril, this is the council. This, again, is an information report, and truly to advise the council of, as a result of the positive vote of Measure M in Atherton voters approving the construction improvement to the existing Little League at Palmer Park as proposed by the Menlo-Atherton Little League, this report is really to share with the council some planning activities as we move forward. There are a number of details which need to be defined and developed in partnership with the Menlo-Atherton Little League to facilitate the efficient and orderly construction of this project. Some of these items are outlined in your staff report. One of the items that staff would like council input and direction relates to the process and the role of the Parks and Recreation Commission in the determination of the final scope of improvements, as well as the use of the parking facilities. The bottom-line goal for the town and the Menlo-Atherton Little League is to create common understanding and agreement regardless of the full scope of what's to be constructed, our respective roles and responsibilities for the construction of these improvements, and appropriate facility uses to ensure a successful public-private partnership. That concludes staff recommendation. If you want to point out that Mr. Bob Hellman of the Menlo-Atherton Little League is here this evening. If the council has any questions, tell him. Thank you.
Are there any council comments on this item? I could put it up to the public for their comments first. Why don't I open enough public comments on this? Merril. Yes. Now, Merril Timson, I'm acting on behalf of the Commissions, I am the chairperson. And I know that we've happily had the Little League part passed, and they will be doing some improvements. When they first presented their plans, we, as far as I can remember, the two of us that are still existing, thought that these were just proposed plans, and that the public had not really had a whole lot of time to have any kind of dialogue on it. Upon questioning further, I was informed that they felt that they did not have to go back to the park and wreck. And I do believe that the public does have, should have a chance to come, and we have a delightful chance to make a fabulous park. But we want to also make sure that this park remains open to the other sports as well, and that, you know, is something that everybody is going to be proud to be able to say that they have. So I, in your consideration, I would hope that you would request that we do have some kind of an active role. This is on behalf of all of it, because there's five new members on the commission. Thank you. Any other public comments, sir?
Evening, Madam Mayor. Congratulations to all of you who are in roles here. I'm Bob Hellman, as Michael referred to here. We started this process nearly three years ago. Had four or five meetings, honestly, at this point, can't remember with Park and Wreck. Got an unanimous vote on that, on that, from that group. And then were suggested to go to the Planning Commission. Went to the Planning Commission, and were instructed that we could, they couldn't do anything until they were instructed to do so by the council. So we came to the council, as some of you who are returning members of the council may recall, and asked for the simple confirmation or... may recall, and asked for the simple confirmation or authorization of the Planning Commission to work with us, to get the details worked out, to make sure that what we were proposing was in line with the building codes for the city, et cetera. And we began then, once that was approved by the council, to have unanimously approved by the council, to have conversations with the Planning Commission. Their first request appropriately was, can you develop a very detailed set of construction drawings and so forth, which we have now done? And right in the midst of that, of course, then, we were suggested that it be put on the, or it wasn't suggested, we were told it was put on the ballot for the citizens to decide. So we had to suspend that, start a voter campaign, which we did. This was, been going on for nearly three years, which I think, as most people know, we were successful in a kind of three out of four resident vote, which we were very gratified by. My sense is, and certainly my request, as the guy that's been driving a lot of this over three years, is to figure out the right party to work with to deal with the details. I thought we got that clear direction from Park and Rec. I thought that that's where we were headed. We held information meetings in the park for people to come out and see the detailed plans and all of that kind of stuff. Some of you were able to come out and join us, which we were gratified by. But that said, at this point, I just would like to figure out a way to get this done appropriately and thoroughly, but without another three years. Please. Some of us don't have the patience for that anymore. So, thank you very much.
Any other public comments? Members of the, we have a couple more people, step up.
Hi, my name is Bob Roser, of the 23 Wood Park. I'm a new member of the Parks and Rec Commission, and pleased to be on that commission. And what I would like to see done, if possible, would be to have a written process of how this is going to get done. Because I'm having a hard time understanding, is it the Planning Commission, does it have to go through Parks and Rec? Does the Town Council lead the thing? You know, what is the process that you have to go through, and what groups have to make recommendations for this thing to move forward? Because although a lot has been done on it, and I've read most of the material, and the design is there, there's a lot of people, even people on, like the Park and Rec Commission, which is responsible for what goes on in the park, haven't really seen the details of that. So I guess my plea is to have some process outlined that says, this is the way this thing will flow through, so people know how to get updated, what they have to know to make decisions about the thing that's voted on and approved. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I need to call a timeout here. I recently spoke to the Park and Rec Commission. One of the things that you're not authorized to do is attend city council meetings and give your position as a Park and Rec Commission member. Therefore, it's appropriate for the chair to come and ask that exact question. It's not appropriate for individual members to come. So if any other individual members are contemplating, making similar pleas, it's not appropriate. Those have to come at a meeting, and your chair has to bring that sense of the committee forward. Because if you start doing it yourselves, we run the risk of Brown Act violations, we run the risk of other potential violations of utilizing your personal title to unduly influence, which I know doesn't happen, but the Fair Political Practices Commission believes it does. So that kind of committee member appearing, it's not appropriate. And I didn't want to interrupt you while you were doing it, but I know that, I see Sandy was going to make a comment, that's not appropriate if you're making a comment as a committee member.
Can I make a comment on that?
Yeah.
My comment is, I asked for a process.
That's for a process, but you ask it?
I didn't put a personal opinion of whether it should be done or not, or what should be done.
But you ask it as a new member of the Park and Rec Commission. You cannot identify yourself as a member and then go on and say anything according to the FPC.
It's just a technicality. He gave his lecture to the real committee, I'm right.
So if you get up and say, "I'm a citizen," you can tell anything you want, but if you get up and say, "I'm a Park and Rec Commission member," that's inappropriate.
I'm just going to do a little sidebar here. All you members out there that are on committees and commissions, if you haven't had the pleasure of having the lecture by City Attorney Connors on the Brown Act and the Fair Political Practices, I'm seeing Jen kind of grin because she's heard it before. But we were very clearly chastised and instructed to be very careful in making public statements as a member of the rail committee and espousing things that, you know, are believed for a position out there. And since Mayor Lou is a member of the Park and Rec, Bob, you're a member, if Sandy gets up and says something about this as a Park and Rec member, that essentially is three, and that would be a Brown Act potential. Although Park and Rec has more than five.
Well, it actually, it's scarier than that, because if they've talked to anybody else about the same issue, now it is a Brown Act serial meeting, and we don't want to go there, and it's just better to keep your committee discussions within the committee and send a spokesperson, one. If citizens want to get up and talk about issues that would theoretically be within their own expertise, that's fine, as long as they speak as citizens only and don't identify themselves by committee, because the Fair Political Practices Commission says, "Hey, wait, why would you identify yourself as a committee member if you're not trying to make a statement on behalf of the committee?" So you have to be, I don't want to be the referee and be unfair, but at the same time, it's something that I have told every board and commission so far, you cannot appear in your